Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 3rd, 2024 City Council Work Session. I ask that everyone please silence all electronic devices. Moving right into our agenda, item A is ADA Transition Plan Adoption. At this time, we'll record a pass hotline with our city engineer Tommy Simmons or our section director.
Good evening. I'm here. My reluctant couple of questions come up. So basically talking about the ADA Transition Plan. Quick background, ADA Transition Plan is being required from all municipalities in the state of North Carolina, being pushed down from the Federal Department of Justice through local parking transportation agencies statewide. So this is actually where you're dealing with the state NCDOT to get our plan approved and adopted. The kind of holding point that they have in all municipalities is if you do not get this plan adopted and implemented, then you get zero money passed through that comes from NCDOT. So this is all federal money and state money coming from NCDOT, power bill funds, ADA 20 participation money on stick projects for sidewalks and on the use paths, any local administrative projects that we do with NCDOT, and any programs in the past such as Safe Route Schools. So all of that would be ineligible if we do not do this ADA Transition Plan in an ad hoc. It's first initiated by NCDOT in 2018 with a five-year completion date, I mean, excuse me, a 15-year completion date. The program was suspended through COVID, which gave another two years. So our new completion date is 2035, and that's not specific to Burlington, that is statewide. So what's in the plan? There are key components that's in the plan that we have developed. That includes public notices, public outreach, we have a formal grievance process. We also identify accessibility barriers, and that's both in the public right-of-way and any facilities that we have. So the public right-of-way or simply things like sidewalk ramps, crosswalks, things where it comes to facilities and buildings, ramps, doors, corridors, bathrooms, the things that even come into programming. So where are we having public programming and what access do they have to buildings and making sure that is ADA accessible for programming as well. The final component of the plan identifies improvement methods to correct your barriers and a cost estimate to remove those barriers. So within the right-of-way, engineering had Mike Tru, a retired inspector from the city, that walked all sidewalks in the city and recorded all the deficiencies that were identified. So that could be anything from ramps that were not ADA compliant, tripping hazards, cracks, breaks in the sidewalk, barriers in the sidewalk from obstruction, that could be a telephone pole, it could be a fire hydrant, it could be anything that's blocked from the sidewalk. So out of our entire sidewalk network, we had 8,600 deficiencies, and again, some of those are very small, some of those will require a whole ramp to be replaced because it's not compliant. Grabbed a couple of nice pictures that kind of sum up a lot of the intersections that have just typical for us. So there's sidewalk section that doesn't have a ramp with a sidewalk piece leading to a curb. Some ramps are there, but they do not have the truncated domes. Some ramps have truncated domes, but they do not have a landing, and landing is, so if you think about someone in a wheelchair coming up this ramp, they are still on the ramp when they are forced to turn left or right. And so a landing has to be a flat portion in which they can choose to turn left or right to traverse the sidewalk. And so if you have an old-style ramp that just comes up and has flares on it, it doesn't give them a proper landing to be able to turn one way or the other. So those are common deficiencies. Again, you have no ramp on this side, no truncated domes and no landings. Here you have a telephone pole that's in the middle of the sidewalk. So this just kind of gives you an example of some of the deficiencies that we find within the right-of-way. Another is a tripping hazard where we have roots that has pushed up a panel, and so that's certainly something identified that would be a part of this plan. Things in facilities, so we had retired Inspector Bill Davis and Rick Smith went through all of our facilities and identified those, evaluating those for ADA barriers or non-compliance. And some things could be as simple as I grabbed two examples from out of the plan. So at the tennis center, it could be something as simple as we don't have the proper sign to go. So they estimate a cost of that, fifteen to sixty dollars to get the right sign to go. Then at that ways, there's a list of things that are deficient. That facility mostly dealing with parking spaces and ADA routes from the parking spaces into the facility. And so there's an estimate there on depending on what routes you go to fix that, some ranges in which those costs would be. I think this is the total cost of both right-of-way and facilities. Right-of-way estimates are low over six million dollars, facility estimates are about three billion dollars. So that's in the range of nine point two million. Figure an average of about a billion dollars per year if it's a lose cost or construction cost, though do not necessarily eliminate any design costs. So as you get into facilities and say you have a bathroom that needs to be re modeled, whether you need any professional design services to figure out how to make those compliant, it's not in that nine point two billion dollars. That gives us a guideline to finish within the 2035 deadline. Within the plan, so the plan was actually compiled by Withers, Robinell, they took all of our content that we did on our observance, put it into a plan that meets the DOJ kind of guidelines for the plan, and also identifies for all these in which we should be repairing items. And that kind of breaks out in the plan year by year of the expectations of items that we should be fixing and addressing to meet compliance. Next is for the plan that is presented, needs to be officially adopted by the City Council. The staff is requesting that that plan be adopted as part of the consent agenda tomorrow night. The adopted plan will be sent to NCDOT and DOJ for concurrence. Once they agree and they deem the plan to be complete, then we will provide them updates towards completion at a periodic level. That's a lot very quickly, but myself or Tommy here, who is the city's ADA coordinator, is more than welcome to answer any questions.
So obviously, as we're moving forward with new projects or upgrades to existing areas, we can be knocking some of these things out as we address, is that the plan?
That is, and so keep in mind that that nine point two identifies no concurrent projects that are going on. So of everything that's downtown that would be touched by the streets gate would be completed and brought up to compliance, and that would already be blended into that nine point two. That nine point two, Megan, assumes that you have no planned projects right now and what it would take to do anything.
So if the bond is successful, some of that improvement is going to be part of that will?
Very much so.
Will get dollar for dollar.
That's right.
So there's no federal assistance, which is other than existing money that we receive?
That's right. In some ways, there's some state assistance. For example, when we are resurfacing, whether it's us or DOT, so if you notice when DOT is doing their countywide resurfacing and if they're resurfacing roads in the city limits, part of the requirements that both DOT requirement has is pushed down and being the plan compliance is they will be replacing ramps that they are affecting by resurfacing. So a lot of times you'll notice that even, I'm not sure if it was flash or the year before, when they resurfaced 62 going north out of town, and they replaced all the ramps that were in that location to make those compliant. So in some ways, we are getting a little bit of help on the DOT level as they are resurfacing streets that have power sidewalks on them, they are required to fix those sidewalks as they're resurfacing. Or not the sidewalks, the ramps.
Any other questions for Jonathan? Not pull that back to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a big fair free day for Link Transit, it's our eight-year anniversary, so at this time we'll recognize John Endo, our transit manager. Welcome, John.
Yes, top of the afternoon, Mayor and Council. Link Transit is at its eight-year anniversary on June 6th, and historically, on the anniversary of Link Transit, we've asked Council for approval to provide free rides to our passengers just to celebrate our anniversary, and then we also provide, we have like a little event downtown, we give away promotional items, get transit information, and just thank riders for being committed to Link Transit. And we're just requesting approval to put this on the consent calendar.
So how many riders have we had in eight years? You should build it off top of your head.
We're almost at a million.
Are we?
Yeah. I expect to the last two years, we've carried close to about 14,000 passenger trips a month. With the implementation of theirs, we've kind of leveled that 10,000, but that is still more than we carried prior to this. So we have some loyal riders to the system.
Very much so. I certainly think this is a great thing to continue. Has everybody pulled that? Any other questions for John? Okay. Thanks, sir. Our next item, item C is third-party management of our pickleball program. At this time, we'll reference Rachel Kelly, our Assistant City Manager. Rachel.
Thank you. Gonna bid on this number, because I do want to quickly pass it to Tony and Greg Weissberger, who is a regional make-up sports facilities company. We'd like to introduce a concept of the third-party management of our new pickleball facilities underway. Can anyone walk through from staff perspective on the concept? Greg will tell you a little bit more about it.
Please.
I'll just pass it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here. Greg lives in Spartanburg, South Carolina, so he's broken through his afternoon, so we're very glad to have him. Some of you probably already know, when the pickleball projects came into being, Rachel had some familiar heritage with sports facilities companies from projects she saw down in Rock Mountain, and so she hired them to do a pro forma for us for pickleball facilities. And that's how we got involved with support facilities. So it was through that pro forma that it was pretty good, and has the council already seen that pro forma? Yeah. Okay. So you know that these two projects are under construction. This is a rendering of the City Park Complex, seventeen courts there, a big covered facility at the back middle is a championship court or ADA accessible court for wheelchair pickleball. And we have six other courts that are under construction, three former tennis courts that we have at Bearcat Park, two of the courts being converted into six pickleball courts and a redo of one of the tennis courts. So the primary reason that we're going pickleball is certainly to meet the big and growing demand locally for pickleball. It's a sort of an obsession nationwide. It's the fastest-growing sport for the last five years, consecutive years in the United States, and we certainly are right in business up here in Burlington, Alamo County area, with a lot of people that enjoy the sport and are asking us every day when the court should be ready. So we're anxious to get them started. So, because we haven't done pickleball as a recreation department before, we put some lines on five of our tennis courts, just find the courts off the pickleball courts, and they're one-fourth the size of a tennis court, so a lot smaller. The nets are not the pair of, the tennis net is higher than the pickleball net. But anyway, to give people opportunities to play, we put lines on those five courts, and we also have four indoor courts at the Bearcat Community Center, using the basketball courts and portable nets and so forth. So we had a little bit of involvement in pickleball, nothing other than just providing those inadequate facilities for the time being, and letting everybody else play on their own, organize on their own, and we have multiple groups here in Burlington that have organized to play pickleball, meet on a regular basis and so forth. So we felt that we could certainly do pickleball, but it would be a learning experience for us. We'd have to get somebody on staff that had some expertise in pickleball to help us organize local play, free play, league play, clinics, lessons, everything that goes along with the sport, sort of like we do our tennis facility, the twelve-court tennis center at City Park is managed by a tennis director and some part-time staff, and then they could source the same thing that we're patterned in pickleball pools after. So we were looking at this, how we were going to do it, and our involvement with sports facilities on the pro forma, it became apparent to me, I guess I was the big driver of this, that Sports Facilities already has everything in place to do successful pickleball programs. And when I say everything in place, I'm talking about national contacts with the USA Pickleball Association and other national organizations that sponsor pickleball, and vendors, big companies that provide pickleball equipment, sponsorships, they had all that already in place, and we're working on it at multiple different places. And so we just got into discussions with Greg and the other people working on the pro forma about how we could maybe forge partnership with sports facilities to operate our pickleball facilities. So that's where we sort of stand right now. We're looking at working out a contract with Sports Facilities, and I'll tell you a little about this company. It was new to me, but I've done a lot of research on it. Right now, they have over sixty facilities nationwide that they are managing, and they're that big cross-section, that's indoor sports facility, the outdoor sports facilities, aquatic centers, and I probably missed some things, but a lot of different sports, including pickleball. They manage the largest indoor pickleball facility in the world in Macon, Georgia, a version of a former shopping mall. I think it's thirty-two courts, thirty-two courts there indoors. And so we found out a very impressive track record for sports facilities and also all the support that you need to have a very successful pickleball program, and also to encourage play coming in from outside, whether it's a national event, a regional event, or whatever, to bring people in town secondary to our local play as a economic impact benefit that will bring visitors here, spend money in the hotels and the restaurants and so forth, so we can do that right of way instead of just having to build up to it. Sports Facilities already has the contacts, and we can jump into that. Here's a little slide on sports facilities companies, and I'm going to turn it over to Greg and tell you a little bit about sports facilities and what they do.
I think that's already been done. Tony's going on the road with me now. I think you covered it pretty well. So, good evening, appreciate you letting me crash the party here for this meeting. Mr. Mayor, council members, and city officials, it's a pleasure to be with you. I've had the pleasure of being with Tony and Rachel multiple times. We count Zoom, it's more times than I can count. Craig was kind of buying me lunch on time as well, so I had good interaction. The city is incredible, got to be here several times, as Tony said, lived down in Spartanburg, so traveled Carolinas extensively. But our company, just so you know, from my perspective, I was a client before I worked at SFC. I was the Vice President of Upward Sports Ministries, for basketball, cheerleading, soccer, you guys, some may be familiar with that, I was there for sixteen years. And we built a facility, and we did the searching that Tony did, and we got connected with SFC to help us right-size our venue, help us put the SOPs in place, operate it efficiently, and get to our stated goals and vision with a month-by-month check-in, making sure we are in lockstep. The only way we run a facility and measure that is if we're running it the way you want it run. That is our measures of success, first and last. That's it. We do have over sixty venues that we manage, and more important than that, we have one venue in our history that did not renew their contract in our history of operations, and quite frankly, because we got so efficient that they tried to do it themselves. So the cost of cost of them business, I think that stat always spoke to me more than how many we're managing, it's how many we retain and have long-term partnerships with. That's what we want. We want Burlington to be a success, and we fit into that, not vice versa. Rachel, you're a clicker there. You already mentioned Rhythm and Rally in Macon, largest indoor complex in the world for pickleball. We are, this one, Lake Kennedy in Florida is coming online actually this month, it's a large venue as well we're operating. Bottom line is, we have more pickleball courts in our management than any other company in the nation. Now, we didn't do that by being big, we did that by being, doing it right one at a time. So it's not about size, we leverage size in your favor in our exclusive partnership with USA Pickleball. In our investment we've made in PBX Pickleball, that's a pickleball organization, we have the exclusive, we are co-owners with USA Pickleball. We have the exclusive rights with the Retired Major League Baseball Players Association, so pickleball exhibitions that travel around, that draw any competitors, fantasy weekends, so you can go learn pickleball, and they'd be playing with John Smoltz, or Tom Glavine, or Urban Meyer, or your favorite tennis pro, Yvonne Lindell, a champion that signed with us. So we have over six hundred former athletes in PBX that we can place in different events, and again, drive people to those events and participation. The goal here is clear to us, and we'll talk about that in just a second. We have got a comprehensive approach that we're going to bring this, yes, pickleball, for this area, quality of life, right? Let's bring a quality of life amenity to the residents where they can have pickleball access, learn the game. We've got pickleball clinics and teaching avenues, more than you can imagine that there are, quite frankly, different aspects of pickleball. So we can go as deep as people want to, it can be surface level, pickleball one-on-one kind of stuff, entry points. You set the cause, we, again, we operate at your discretion to excellence, customer service excellence, programming excellence, event excellence, making sure to achieve your stated goals. One last thing on here, the Play Easy partnership, there's a, sports facilities are moving toward kind of that Yelp review, Play Easy is the company where if you're wanting to host an event, you go to Play Easy and search, hey, I want twelve pickleball courts, I need it in this geography, or whatever, show me what's out there, and it, here you go, here's your fifteen options, right? Here's all the city facts and everything. Well, we have invested in the Play Easy, so Burlington, when there's a search, any facility operated by SFC will automatically be at the top of the search. So we have bumped you to the front of the line in that distance. And we know about economic impact. We're hired to do that all over the country, from Rocky Top Sports World in Gatlinburg, Murd Beach Sports Center, on down the line, again, sixty different venues, all of them want some level of economic impact. It may not be the primary focus, but they want some level of economic impact to help drive business to local businesses. In your facility, we're tracking toward year one about one point two million dollars worth of economic impact for local businesses, ramping up to year five, there should be about four million dollars of economic impact directly from pickleball usage of this new complex. Last slide for me, and I won't read you everything, it's one full-time employee we have here, because you have a hundred full-time employees in our support center that are working for you full-time behind the scenes, they're not part of your cost, that's the general range, will be here full-time, a resident, community, their family residing here, part of Burlington, will be a resident here, knowing this community. Again, I've mentioned control, the goals are stated clear, one, quality of life for the local residents, and let's make them feel like, wow, Burlington is even a better place to live and reside here. And secondly to that, let's drive even on impact, the bottom line, that's the fine line that we'll work together to find, of like, do you want to have a few more tournaments that take up some weekends, right, but driving enough impact, or do you want more local play availability and a little less of that? We'll work together to fine-tune that, ongoing, constant communication in that. We'll handle presenting an annual business plan, we'll tell you, here's how we're going to achieve the exact goals you want to happen every year, that you'll get to approve yearly. And then for our fees, it's just a flat monthly management fee that we've worked within your budget parameters. Your budgeted amount to operate this facility did not change with our involvement coming. We finished, we kept that at the same amount that you already had budgeted to begin with, and we should deliver far beyond that in our involvement, is the resulting shipping
Thank you very much, Greg, that's very good. Couple of those facilities that were listed there, the Rally, Rhythm and Rally in Macon, Georgia, as we talked about, that's the largest indoor facility. Rachel and I were on the call with Greg and some other sports facilities, personnel last week, and when that Rhythm and Rally opened the facility, they had projections of how much revenue, if I understand correctly, Greg, you correct my wrong, the first month they did a hundred thousand dollars more than was projected, which is pretty out there. I don't know how they did that, but anyway, that's not our number one goal, is to increase revenue, but that's, I thought that was very impressive. We also, that Lake Kennedy at Coral, Cape Coral, Florida, we contacted them along with a facility in West Monroe, Louisiana, a facility in Gardendale, Alabama, and Rachel had talked to one of the city officials that she knows in Rock Mountain about the facility they're managing, our indoor sports facility. So, and we tried to talk to Macon, Georgia, so we called them about five times, never could get up to the right person, and they never called us back.
They didn't tell me that.
Well, we were trying to talk to the city bigger person, sports facility. But anyway, of those references we checked, every one of them were outstanding in favor of sports facilities companies, none of them had any negative thoughts. I think those references, I think were included in their package, weren't they, or were they not? So you should have those references. Anyway, what's next? As we said, we're trying to get ready for the construction company, Mark Construction out of Greensburg is working on the pickleball facilities. That's estimated around the middle of September, they should be finished, with the possibility that that can be brought back some, maybe into August, depending on weather conditions and supplies and so forth. So it's looking good that we'll be operating at the end of summer, both of these facilities, one in City Park and one in Bearcat. So we're in a little bit of a time for us to get somebody on board, but we're negotiating with sports facilities now, and legal and finance are with Sports Facilities now and legal and finance are working with the two, so the management fee that Greg had on his slides there, it's a hundred fifty, well, a hundred eighty thousand for twelve months, so it says a hundred fifty thousand, however, we already lost part of this year, so. But anyway, and what we're trying to do is to get this contract worked out, bring to you hopefully July meeting so that we can possibly get a general manager hired and that. Sports Facilities will do the major part of the hiring process, but we will get a choice of two candidates, I think you said Greg, that we can choose on who's gonna be the general manager. And hopefully we get that person on board before the courts are ready to open so that we can at least make a little preparation and get started before we have the court ready to play on and we don't really have a plan of what's going on. So, we're working on that as hard as we can and we're here to ask, if you'd answer, ask us any questions, we'll do the best we can. Greg's got a lot of experience and knows all about the Sports Facilities companies and Rachel and I have been involved in this for a pretty good while, so if you've got any questions, we're happy to answer.
In the slides you had up on the bullet point said that SFC would have a marketing, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, how would that work if we're gonna use like TDA money to market? Would it offset some of the fees? How do we?
In our, TDA budget, we've allocated a line to go towards pay for our pickleball program.
Okay. And then, and instead of their marketing sponsorship opportunities, are probably gonna actively look at that?
Absolutely. We've even talked, and this may not be right away, but we've even talked about, you know, possibly getting a pretty big name and sponsor for the facility at City Park, you know, and they have experience in doing that, so yes, we want sponsorships to help offset, you know, the cost of those courts and the operation.
One of the things that I would really like to see us do with that is if you get a corporate sponsor, obviously they have a corporate logo, I'd like to see it look less commercial and more like branded city, but maybe highlighting the individual corporate sponsors at a large level so that it doesn't look overly commercial.
I think we, we work a lot with Morgan, who is our designer, graphic designer here in the city and she keeps us in line.
She's branding colleagues.
Keeps us in line to make sure that we.
And to that point, if you wanna maintain the integrity of that.
And that's, that's an important point of collaboration, certainly we sell sponsorships up into including naming rights sponsorships. One thing that early that we'll do is provide evaluation of like, what should it cost here for this facility to sponsor a court? Or what's the right fee, what's the right term? But then branding-wise too, you guys get to set that standard. Some people like, get as much money as you can, if it looks like NASCAR, that's fine, and other people really wanna say, let's make this place, keep some integrity on how visually appealing it is and so that's certainly a common request and easy to buy by.
I can assure you, it won't be available, but it will be very tasteful and hopefully bring us a sponsor. Sort of like the event center at the stadium that is being named for a local company.
And then the customer service element, we're, our recreation park program's done for high-level customer service, collaboration with the community and reacting rapidly to feedback, so I wish I could be the other item that would be important to be. Interestingly enough, I was out of town this weekend and eating lunch at a restaurant and the table overfrom us, the folks who I found out were from Charlotte, were talking about our pickleball courts and they knew they'd be open tomorrow.
That's correct. I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, that the general manager that Sports Facilities hired, I'll be direct contact and work daily with that person, so hopefully we'll, we'll make sure that it's operated in like all of our other facilities and has a good reputation, just like our recreation parks.
And Mayor, as Tony said, this is the concept, we wanna make sure the council's comfortable with the concept. We still have some issues to work out, including like our finance, some fine details of the contract, but we wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with us going into this arrangement.
I certainly am, based on the feedback I provided, if we can have a initial statement.
What's the initial term of the contract? We're, that's, we're talking three years, Sports Facilities wants five years, so that's, so that's one of the points we're going back and forth on.
Well, if that money relates to three, should be just that.
That's right.
But I will tell you, we're looking at this and I got a lot of confidence in Greg because he's sort of thinks like I do, we're looking at this as a long-term relationship, not just a three-year or five-year contract and then we do something, you know, we want this to go right and be something that we can work with in long-term categories than short-term.
What's the thought on the court sponsorships of the courts, of individual court or multiple courts as a financial paper for a certain number of years, that's to be reviewed, or what's the concept there?
Well, typically, it depends on what the activation of it is. If it's a naming rights sponsorship, most of our naming rights deals are ten-year deals just because it's gonna involve some significant branding that you don't want to turn over very often, right, and a significant commitment. Certainly, everything's a negotiation, right? And to be clear, no sponsorship of any kind like that would be executed without bringing it right here and having you speak into it and agree to the execution of it. Courts sponsorships, you still want those multiple years, just again, branding-wise and not changing it out, three-to-five-year kind of term. And then the smaller sponsorship, you have smaller opportunities for, you know, the local dentist or whoever else, they be a pickleball fanatic that doesn't want to quite make that investment, usually trying to find other areas for them to get branded in their activation as well.
Any other questions? All right, everybody, okay, move forward. All right, thank you, appreciate you so much, you have been with us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
You still have time. All right, Tony, Kim, podium. Item D, Recreation Parks Fees and Charges Impact on Participation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Kim, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I hope you told, remember back when we were talking about fees and charges and we do it on an annual basis, you know, we evaluate everything, all put together, recommend that to the city council for the first part of December and then council usually approves that to be effective January one. So, we are now, at the December meeting, the council asked us to give up, update during the year about the effect of these fees and charges on participation, you know, of other people to the court. And let me say right up front, that's a big consideration anytime we start talking about fees and charges. We want our fees and charges to be reasonable for our local residents, we don't have to price anybody out, especially low-income families. We're trying to make it affordable for everybody to be able to participate, use our facilities or kids to participate in our athletic programs or our day camp, summer program or after-school program so that they, everybody has access to our parks and recreation system. And that's, that's a big concern with us and I'm sure it's a big concern with council members too. I will tell you, just real quick, I didn't have it in the program, but Rachel and I worked with a group of Elon students last year to put together a proposal for a possible scholarship program. Harold would probably remember, we talked about having some kind of access to financial help for those families that say have three or four kids that wanna play youth sports and can only afford to play for one or two, you know, we don't wanna leave anybody out. So, these students put together a good proposal for us. We have applied for a couple of grants, one of them we didn't get, but last week we got two thousand dollars awarded to us from the Richardson Family Foundation, that's the, doesn't go by Jerry Richardson, but that's the family, Jerry Richardson had owned the Carolina Panthers for a long time, that family, and so they've given us two thousand dollars to pay the registration fees for kids in our youth athletics that can't afford to pay them the fee, so we're very happy to have that, it's the first time we've ever had a scholarship by program. And one of the things that the kids did, I mean, the students did at the Elon program, they, we don't, we're not set up, and Harold, remember, the reason we haven't done this in the past, we're not set up to do financial analysis of families, you know, we, we don't have that expertise or apparatus or anything like that and we don't wanna be in people's personal business. So, what, what the outcome was, we will look at families that already have assistance through social services, whether that's food stamps or school lunches or some other assistance that they can show us that they are already a family that's in need and have been certified for this, to those groups that have the opportunity to evaluate their financial situation and make sure they're eligible. So, if they show us that, then they qualify for one of our scholarships. So, we're anxious to get that in play. We just got the notice that we're gonna get the two thousand last week and as soon as we complete the paperwork, they'll send us a check, so we'll get that started right away. So, I'm very happy about that, I wanted to tell you that. And these fees and charges, Rachel, can you pull up that slide? Thank you. I sent out a, we did a little, collected our data on different activities that we had fee increases, these are, these are programs that had fee increases this past January the first, we did put everything on there and didn't have a fee increase, but if you go back.
Just getting the whole picture, there you go.
And let me just run through real quick, this was in your packet too, but adult athletics is about the same, I don't think there's gonna be much change in adult athletics going forward, it is what it is, adult softball used to be a huge sport here, not anymore, different reasons, I won't talk about that, but we still have people that play and certainly we have pickleball and we're thinking about adding some other adult sports too. Youth sports is pretty interested as far as our participation has gone up in every sport except youth basketball, I think maybe I mentioned it in council meeting before, we changed our concept of youth basketball this past fall and winter where we, we went to an instructional program instead of competitive program. That worked good, but the numbers fell off a lot, so this coming basketball season we'll be offering still the instructional program, but also a competitive program so that parents have their choice of how they want to go, so that's, that's a reason for that particular decline in youth basketball. The amusement park is really, we're real proud of what we're doing at the amusement park, all five rides are operating, we charge two dollars for the carousel and the train rides and a dollar for the free kiddie rides and you can see that we've done really well as far as this year or the last year so far. This is, this is, these numbers are through January through April. The community centers, a little bit, lots of what we get out of the community centers are the gyms off of the multi-purpose rooms and the gyms and Fairchild, pretty, pretty the same. The lakes, this is good for McIntosh, but haven't seen much, much difference in the lakes. Cornell Senior Center, about the same, maybe looked up a little bit, Lake Camac, the same, Lake McIntosh, not a whole lot to, you know, say on that. Bigelow Center, one of the things, or that's just North Park, Sutomo Building, we've had a few lesser rentals this, this year at the Sutomo Building than we had previous year, talked to the staff over there and some, some of the rentals have moved from the Sutomo Building to the gym or the multi-purpose room and you can see they're up a little bit or the Sutomo Building's down a little bit, but it's, it's different things that go on at different places and so it's always a variable. The Aquatic Center only been in operation for less than a month or maybe about a month and so it started off good as far as the outdoor pool even though the weather hadn't cooperated so well so far. Badways, about the same, is maybe a little, little below that too on some rentals. Golf course, ain't that saying enough about the golf course? We are really doing great in revenue out there, gross revenue. I can tell you, these are the first quarter totals, we had a bad month in, let's see, January, trying to place it because of the weather, but anyway, we, I'll give you a good example, May, if I don't hear, but May, this past month, we had sixteen days of rain in May, that was over half, the thirty-one days in May, so sixteen is over half the days in May that had rain and we still did a hundred and three thousand in revenue for, for May and that was the fourth month in the fiscal year that we've done over a thousand per month. So, we're, if June goes like I think it will and we got five weekends in June and we just had, first weekend this past week, we did over eleven thousand on Saturday and Sunday combined, we're gonna be over a billion dollars in gross revenue, now that's not profit, that's gross revenue to golf course.
And that's, and that's double of what it was in June and then you.
Yes, it's way, way up, Harold, I mean, you, you know as well as I do, it's way up to what we've ever done in the past. Summer camps, they may, they a little, look a little different, we had four sixteen and we're three sixty-two right now, this is through April, but a lot of people wait till the last minute to get their kids enrolled, but in our, in talking to our summer camp people, every one of our camps is full except Fairchild and it has a few more openings, maybe ten or, or less openings, but generally, if there's a demand and you can drop that a little bit come the twenty-third, twenty, you can see that we took four kids, if there's a big demand, when we get ready to start and we have a, we always add like, Overbrook is O B, we went over a hundred there, SM and St. Mars, we went over a hundred there and so Fairchild almost a hundred, so we add kids and that's why we got four sixteen last year versus what we add on down on the summer camps. That three sixty-two will be over four hundred for us all to open, so. If you got any questions about any of these particular items or anything else that's not on our list, like I say, we're going to flip the, the facilities and programs that have a fee increase this past January one.
I'd like to see you keep track of the figures.
Yes, yes, sir. We, we should come back to you at least twice more before the year's over, you know, sometime probably the end of the summer and then sometime fall.
Yeah, not later in November because we're looking at fees.
The fees in December, yes, sir, absolutely. This is just the first of probably three reports, do you agree with that?
Maybe, yeah, and I know we're certainly very pleased to be able this summer to report all the fees that went into effect in January.
Any other questions, Tony, on this?
The, the bottom line is, the fee increases have the effect on participation on wide scale? No, they haven't, they're, you know, we're very happy where we stand as far as our fee structure right now and we haven't eliminated people or run people off because of the fees too much.
Thank you, Tony, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, item D, this is Burlington PD Staffing and Operations Update, at this time we recognize our police chief, Alan Littler. Welcome, chief.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, so really what I wanna do is to just provide you an update on your police department and where we're at today. As we move through the presentation, feel free to ask questions as we're moving through, that's probably the easiest way to deal with a specific. through. That's probably the easiest way to deal with a specific thing. And of course, if you have questions, it'll then just walk in. I've got a scroll with PowerPoint, so, uh, there with me. So I think one of the last times I really got an update from the chief is probably Chief Long in November of '22, when we were facing a major understaffing in sworn positions. Since then, council took, uh, specific action to address police sal, police officer salary and benefits. And I'm here to tell you that that's been very successful. That investment has paid off. Uh, the department also continues to feel that really positive impact of city council support, city leadership support, and community support as well. Council's role in this whole process has been really critical. The number one thing that I hear from new officers as they join the department is the support that they see from council. It's different here than it is in other agencies and cities across the state, and they know it. It's very important when we ask people to go out and do very dangerous and difficult work that they have that support. At the same time, the salary and benefit changes work and remain very important and key to the success. So where we started in November of '22 was that 119 officers hired. Since then, we've processed over 500 applicants for police officer jobs. We've hired 55. There is some turnover there, some folks that didn't get through training, but that's all a normal part of the hiring and evaluation process. Of those hired, they include, include laterals from other departments, some that are very qualified, very experienced, new police officers, and also some people who have returned to the police department from the private sector. We now have 150 of 152 positions filled for police officers. Now, that includes 25 people who were in some form of training, so it's not like they're all deployable at this point. But that is around the corner, and that is something that's, uh, really probably attainable in what, November, December of this year. On the professional staff side, we've got about four vacancies. Uh, all of our police officer vacancies and all of our professional staff vacancies have final conditional offers. They're pending. Like, we have offered somebody a job, and they have a date in June to show up to accept that job for us to be fully staffed across the whole organization. Another important benefit that was provided in November of '22 was the Police Officer Wellness Leave Program. Keep in mind, this is officers with seven, 14, or 21 years of experience, people that have been policing for a long time. When they come back from that leave, they are rejuvenated. It is almost like seeing the person who walked in on the first day of work. They've come back and stepped directly into new challenges that, uh, have been very beneficial for the department, like, uh, you know, eight, uh, let's see, 21-year veterans applying to these supervisors. May get their first try, right? And of course, they're extremely experienced, so the folks that want those roles anyway, uh, and they, they come back in June and taking on those challenges. The support, the, the staff is inside and outside of the department has created a very positive morale amongst all staff. We see the improvements in work performance and outcomes in the community as a result of that. And of course, more staff for us means more proactive policing so that we're better addressing community needs across the city. And I'll talk about this. Communications are priority number one in an emergency. We see that in the fire department, we see that in the police department. The Burlington Communication Center is a core component of, of what we do. They are disaster-proof. The community and our departments, of course, require 100% readiness for this group. There is no opportunity for the radios to turn off and not function. We have to be able to talk to one another. Our radio system is really, uh, a key component of that as well. On this slide, we see a call Tron. That's just a specific kind of radio technology that's been built to work inside buildings in urban environment. It's different than other radio systems, so for us, it's really key that it works inside of a big retail store, a school, an office building, or in the hospital, right? Things that don't exist in other places. Our communications center in 2023 handled, handled 108,000 calls, just over, for four different agencies: Burlington Police, Burlington Fire, Graham Police, Graham Fire. We've been providing this service for the City of Graham for about three years on a contract basis. They did very satisfying. I think that if you talk to anybody in the police or fire service, we do the exact same thing, because the telecommunicators who do the work and the administrative side of the police department are highly effective. Uh, as an example, uh, last night, Graham had two vehicle pursuits. Uh, during one of those, a Burlington officer was close by, deployed stop sticks successfully on the vehicle that was moving, and Graham was able to arrest the driver of that vehicle. All of that being coordinated by the Burlington Communications Center, out of public interest. They do an extensive amount of work, they're very highly trained, and we're actively encouraging ingenuity and problem solving in that group. That's one of the things that really sets them apart. A couple of situations that come to mind. One is overlapping emergencies. So, uh, a few months ago, a foot chase is ongoing with a wanted person, and at the same time, a patrol officer is sent to a hotel to confront a man who's wanted for a domestic violence offense, who's also armed, and tries to attack him and kill him. The telecommunicators are dealing with both of those emergencies happening at the same time, and they do a flawless. Very important to make sure that the resources get where they're supposed to. Another one, it's a, a fire call on South Memphis Street with an apartment, uh, building that was on fire. Uh, this is, uh, Dick Wong, one of our, uh, telecommunicator leads, who's on the phone with the woman who's inside the apartment that's on fire. He tells her to do the only thing that she could do to save her life, which is to scream. Because the Chief Lawrence, I'm sure, would testify to this, if, if apartment is fully engulfed, it's filled with smoke, it's filled with flame, and you can't see where people are, especially when they're hiding under the bed trying to save their life. Firefighters are over there to save her life, pull her out of that building, and she survives, and then she's got serious injuries. All only possible because of the quality of the telecommunicators work. One other piece that's been really critical is we've doubled the staffing crisis for the police department. Has been our ability to change the work that the telecommunicators do to meet the resources that we have available, or as we pursue improved technology, right? Because they work for us, we can give them the rules and the requirements for what we want them to do. They've been, uh, exceptional in making those adjustments. Uh, the other piece of this is, uh, every day, part of it has to do with them having crisis intervention training, part of this, uh, their ingenuity, their training experience. The quality of our emergency response is very heavily dictated because of what they do, how well they do with the questions that they're asked, the informations that they're able to relay, the, uh, resources that they send automatically and based on their own intuition. We've also remained very focused on constant improvement. Um, all, all the people who coach in the room will recognize this, that you're either getting better or you're getting worse. You're definitely never staying the same, and exists in policing in the professional space as well. Training and staff development are key, especially in a complicated and complex job like policing. We know that the training is also insurance to prevent bad things from happening. Our training is as close to real life as we can get, so that staff, if they're gonna make a mistake, they make it during training and in practice instead of the real world. Over the last year, as we've hired these 55 officers, a huge amount of police department resources have been spent to train and develop them. Officer Hudson, who's sitting in the back, will probably be mad at me for calling her out as well by field training officers. She's done an exceptional job. She's probably had somebody in her car training done really since November of 2022, right? Think about the demand on Officer Hudson's time, her inability to do other work that she would do because she's investing in those departments. That's a really big administrative, uh, requirement for us that makes us unable to use that same staff time for other things, but some of it's really important as we continue ramping up the organization. A high level indication about the quality of the results of the training and development and the folks that are on staff has been that we've sent officers to 61,000-plus calls for service in 2023, and only 18 of those resulted in the use of force. That's really remarkable if you think about those numbers. If you think about physically having to arrest thousands of people and only use force 18 times, that's really remarkable. I'll say it's especially, uh, impressive because of how frequently the officers are arresting offenders that are armed with guns, including juveniles who run with the police, run from the police while armed. That's really about the most difficult thing that I can think about. The counter, trying to chase a 14-year-old who's armed with a gun and not having a result in the use of force. Really exceptional work. On the bottom of this slide, you'll see two other things. On the left, uh, the department received a grant, which you are familiar with, uh, to, uh, the Police Executive Research Forum is studying the Burlington Police Department and the way that we use real-life bodyborne camera footage to train our officers. The ability to learn from others after they've gone out and done exceptional work. They're developing a best practice, uh, to share with other law enforcement officers across the United States. And secondly, overdoses remain a significant problem in this community, just like they are across the whole country. We have invested in specific training for patrol officers to give them a more advanced skill set so that we get better outcomes for overdoses. Two pieces of that I'll mention, the officers routinely use the lock zone to reverse overdoses, and that continues to be a vital component. People who are alive can get into treatment and get well. People who die cannot. And on the other side of that, we are very focused that if somebody is gonna suffer ill for illegal drugs in this community, especially if it results in an overdose, we're gonna figure out who they are, we're gonna investigate, and we're gonna arrest. And that is a big piece of You know that modern policing requires a lot of equipment and technology. It's about all for safety, accountability, evidence collection, so that people are convicted and not just charged for crimes. In 2023, we were very focused on equipment for the staff for this department. It's financially proven that if you don't have 150 officers, you do not buy equipment for 150 officers. That would be a risk of negligence. So we haven't done that. But as staffing goes up, we have been acquiring over time those basic things that everybody needs: uniforms, bodyborne cameras, radios, patrol cars, so that they can go out and do that work. That's on the move right now. Two other quick pieces, uh, we have implemented Good Sam for the First Police Department in the United States to use that technology. That's live straight video from 911 callers. It has proven to be effective. A couple of examples, get the firefighters to, uh, a correct location of an apartment fire, get an officer safely to a bike in a parking lot, and apprehending a sex offender who was fleeing the scene. The person on scene is sent, clearly, with a, a car leaving. The officers are able to stop the guy as he's leaving and taking him to the house. Another important piece of this, uh, sorry, uh, you've heard about during this first responder recently. That implementation is going well. Infrastructure, equipment, F A, partial approval is complete. We did training later this month, and that's really something I hope to see for the next few months of the season. Lastly, is a going to the regional SWAT team. We've, we've seen an increase in missions this year, and frankly, it's a result of the, uh, more dangerous criminal offenders that we're encountering. Some of that is reactive to 911, right? If somebody is, uh, suicidal, threatening violence, and barricades themselves inside of a house, that's not a patrol officer call. That's a special group that's got enhanced equipment and training to come out and resolve that safely. The other piece of that is, is that as we transition to proactive policing, our officers are generating evidence and proper calls to search locations where there are violent offenders that are armed with rifles and machine guns. I was speaking to, uh, Mr. Owens about the prevalence of machine guns in the community recently. When we're sit, when we have to send officers to, to deal with those people, we gotta send them in the safest manner possible, right? And that's about having a team specifically equipped and trained in that. This had, this dangerous work has required us to make routine use of armored vehicle from the shooter's office. They've been very, uh, gracious with that. The presence of an armored vehicle in the city is about giving officers a safe place to work from. There is no other tool that's gonna stop the rifle run, and I'm telling you, even on the vast majority of these works, we're encountering people with assault rifles specifically by choice. Having an armored vehicle basis so that the officers don't have to shoot somebody if they're behind it. They don't have to force, they use the force and counter when that, uh, equipment is there. It's also the only option that's available for us to rescue an officer or a citizen who's under fire from somebody with a rifle. You cannot send a police car to do that, but the moment's history. One example of the, uh, the SWAT team's really successful, um, resolution, safe resolution of incidences, uh, we had to shut Interstate 40 down for about four hours, uh, I think that was a Sunday morning. Uh, there was an armed person inside of a vehicle who was in a mental health crisis, uh, with her children, and the SWAT team were the ones that we sent because they have that advanced training to be able to resolve that safely, right? That's very dangerous, very tense, and in a very small space, and they were very successful. Nobody gets her, uh, she's able to carry the truck. So when we talk about the action of all of these things, where, where does this really put us as a department? It makes us capable of focusing on our three department-wide big-picture priorities. An effective emergency response, preventing, and that's about, if somebody calls 911, they need the best possible police service when it happens. The next piece is preventing harm, and that's really through proactive policing, reducing death, injury, victimization from things like violent crime, traffic crashes, and overdoses. And of course, developing positive relationships with the community outside of an emergency. Reassuring and engaging. Those are, are big-picture priorities, and that's what we talk about in the department so that everybody understands what, what the business is about. Some of the impacts from that, the cases that we've been able to assign to CID are up, more detectives investigating more crimes, clerics have nearly done, quality of work is improved. We did 2,000 more traffic stops in '23 than in 2022. That's specifically from this group, I think, I, I think, I feel like I've gotten a traffic complaint from just about everybody in this room out of necessity because the driving has been dangerous. As a result of those stops, crashes are down citywide. That's, that's, uh, not what has happened locally or nationally or regionally, crashes that go on in other places. The police department's also doing police work differently, and this is, this is important for us as we think about how do we get the officers to be more proactive and prevent bad things from happening to people in the community. Civilian crash investigators are taking 15% of all crashes, virtual response units doing 25% of all preliminary reports, and the Burlington Donors Assistance Program has 1,400 volunteer hours on traffic control, direction responses to people who are, uh, running gas and people like that. A service that we can still provide for the public that doesn't cost us police officer time. The Met also wanted to work on a check safety program of airborne and C D O T, and it covers all the safety protection. So by changing the way that we do police work, we also create more time for officers to be proactive and prevent victimization. And that's what that, that last piece is really about, the way the professional staff, the way the police work. So, thanks a lot. So, uh, this is a very basic skirmish. Thank you. Uh, this is a very basic visualization of what those changes are and how we do policing differently. So on the left, you'll see how police services have really shifted from relying significantly on sworn officer time to relying more on professional staff and volunteers. All of that's on purpose. Our professional staff are, are really exceptional, and they're highly effective in the work they do. And this makes it so that we can better allocate, allocate scarce resources that is police officer time. Now on the right, what you see is that officers have transitioned from being reactive to 911 responses and having to do a whole lot of administrative tasks, and transitioning to be proactive and preventing bad things from happening to people and victimization. And that's really the place that we want to be. We don't want to respond to a shooting or a serious crash or an overdose. That means it's about something that has already happened and somebody has already hurt. We want to arrest the shooter with a gun before they get to the shooting. We want to stop and cite somebody for dangerous driving. We want to arrest a drug dealer before they sell drugs to kill somebody. These are the big-picture changes, and it is absolutely working. As we move forward, the department has grown and it continues to grow, and we still have those 25 officers to get through training. We've been able to promote and do an experienced supervisors. I'll tell you that that's a direct outcome of the salary and benefit changes as we've been able to recruit qualified latos from other organizations. People with 15, 18 years of experience have very reputable local agencies that are now on our team as supervisors. We're further stabilizing the organization, right? As all these people come in and everybody's learning how to function with one another, and we're very focused on retaining our sworn staff and our professional staff. The team is already strong, but it's getting stronger, right? And it will continue that way as long as we, uh, keep our, keep everybody on the team. Continue training and development for everybody, and then proactively address the community's needs. Uh, we are very, uh, probably our next, our next thing that's really on the way is the infusion of its basic policing. Um, so this is, if you think about the way that medicine was developed, that's really what we're talking about, being very precise and Being very precise and active like a doctor who treats a illness. They maintain the health and the vitality of the patient, that's where we're headed with policing, right? So we're doing it exactly the right way. So I heard loud and clear when I came to the police chief that you wanted a modern, highly-trained, proactive police department with officers and professional staff who would prevent bad things from happening to people. And I think that's exactly what the department is delivering. This, this is all I can add. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you, give you an update and have to answer your questions.
That's a great report. We challenged PD with with improved re-boat and reallocation of monies and sort of enhancing the benefits to stabilize the department. We challenged the department with a higher level of service. More change, more proactive policing of a safer community. And I think that this pretty much sums it up, that we've got our money. So I think that's all this body ever asked for, we really appreciate it. We all read the significant reports and it's amazing to me how well-trained our officers are and you can tell in the narrative. You can tell in the narrative. I've read so many and I don't understand how a positive outcome happened. And I read it and I read the gene and I'm like, there's no way this worked out this way. And, and that is training. And being able to hire competent people. It's okay if it takes five hundred applications to get fifty-five, that's perfectly fine. And I think you guys are on the exact right path. I think all of us would proudly say that how proud we are of you guys and what we're doing in the city of Burlington. And it's noted in the region. And we all hear things when we're at various meetings and whatnot, and just out of community. So thank you guys for what you're doing.
Alan, how does the other departments in the region prepare in terms of vacancies? They're still down. They're still trying to make moves around salary benefits and changes to the workload to attract enough people to give work. The smaller agencies naturally fill up first because they have fewer vacancies typically. And it becomes a more extreme challenge if an agency of two-five loses five people than an agency of two-hundred or five. And they're, they're still struggling.
This is right, I do want to thank Chief Valak for his leadership and him the past couple of years or a year and a half, I guess, as well. And yet, a lot of people come to this organization, again, money is important, but leadership is important as well. And it's important, as Alan said earlier, from the city council, and we appreciate your support of the police department. And Chief and I had a conversation today, if you notice, our local paper had two articles on the front page of the local paper that was positive about the Burlington Police Department. And that is not often, you see positive articles in multiple articles on the front page of our local paper.
Any other comments? Thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. You know, this thought though, too, remember that?
I think of that all the time.
And I think when he was going through that headcount, I think he said a few we didn't know about. All right, next is item, voluntary continuous annexation request. I won't read all of the parcel IDs, but I think Jamie's going to give us an update on the next.
Yes, thank you very much. So this item, we're actually in a poll from tonight's agenda. Let me just minimize this. The applicant contacted me late this afternoon and indicated, and this is tied to one of the other items that I'll be discussing shortly. And so you'll hear more about it, but the applicant is adding additional parcels to this proposal. And so at this point, we've been asked to pull the item for potential code care.
Okay, so they'll go back through PNC process, are you thinking that?
Yeah.
And then move into the next item where we're going to move to IG, the sports and commission reports, and we've got four items next.
Okay, so the first item is a zoning request. It is on the northeast side of Chapel Hill Road. The property is highlighted here in teal. It is adjacent to their existing self-storage facility. So the applicant also owns the property that is pretty much fully woodeded. And it is currently zoned office and institutional. They are looking to expand their existing self-storage facility. And as a result, would like to rezon the property to light industrial with a limited-use zoning request so that it is consistent with the uses that are occurring on the adjacent property. It is consistent with the future land use designation. So the, there's three limited-use requests associated with this. Outdoor storage, self-service storage, external and internal. These are three percent of the overall total permitted uses within the district. And planning and zoning recommended five to zero to this zoning request. So we have asked for your consideration to place this on for the June eighteenth City Council Public Hearing Date. Any questions on this one? The, by the way, all of the items, city planning and zoning commission recommended. This is the second one, this is off of Gilmore Street at the corner of Gilmore and Graham Street. It's about one and a half acres in size. The current zoning is heavy industrial. The applicant is seeking to change the zoning to high-density residential to allow for residential development to occur on the property. It is consistent with the future land use designation of the area. You know, this is a transitional area, so it would allow for additional residential development. Potentially up to, and this is just rough estimates, no exact development proposal here. But a variety of different types of uses. Single-family attached, detached, and multifamily would all be allowed under the proposed zoning designation. Planning and zoning commission also recommended this unanimously. And this is another request to be put on for the June eighteenth City Council date. Any questions on this one? This is tied, this is the third item, off of sixty-one on the west side, south of Lake McIntosh. So the applicant, there's about ten parcels that are proposed to be rezoned. They are currently in Guilford County. However, the properties are contiguous to existing city limits. And so the request is that right in front of the planning and zoning commission was to change the zoning from ag in Guilford County to medium industrial in Burlington, in Burlington, Burlington. The, this parcel, so this is tied to what I would notify earlier. The applicant is seeking to add, where's my mouse? This parcel along with their zoning request. So instead of making the request and asking for you to consider this on your June eighteenth date as well, they will be going back to the planning and zoning commission for consideration to add this parcel and potentially other. And then we'll come back to you. So I'll be visiting you again on this project with a request for annexation and a request for a zoning. This is a limited-use zoning request. This is part of the Rock Creek Economic Development Area identified by Guilford County. Any questions on this one? Hi.
Jamie, what's the total landmass of that site?
A hundred and seventy-three acres.
Then include the additional, right?
No. The additional, maybe another seven? Maybe more. I'm not sure of the exact number, but it's large enough that they want to go back. Lastly, is the Tucker Street Burlington Christian School. So you may remember that this site has been the subject of numerous special use permits originally from nineteen seventy-eight ongoing. So there are four parcels that are included in their total sort of campus. They are still building and expanding and seeking to grow. So instead of going through, they had basically two options, to go back and amend their special use permit again, or to seek to rectify the rezoning to a UDO-compliant zoning district, which would then allow for the uses to continue and expand without having to go back each time to the board of adjustment. So after consideration with the applicant, they have decided to rezon, seek to rezon the property to general business limited use to be consistent with our UDO. Those are the properties that are highlighted there. The current zoning of the property is medium intensity residential with a small amount of light industrial. You can see the future land use designation is kind of split between traditional residential and business for light industrial. These are the limited uses that the applicant is requesting. Almost all, if not all, are consistent with uses that already are occurring on the property. So it's about sixteen uses. Planning and zoning commission recommended this rezoning requires unanimously. And so this is another that I'm asking for your consideration to be placed on the June eighteenth City Council Public Hearing Date.
Back up one slide. Where's the church on that?
Their church?
Epic Four, sixth and third.
Let me see if it, it's hard to see on the aerial here, but it's the building. So there's, there's several different buildings and different uses. You know, my understanding is they're interested in continuing to expand in this direction, which would be more internal to their campus. So there may be, currently, I think what they're proposing won't require additional parking or additional new access points, it will all be internal to their facility.
Just kind of, by getting the UDO compliant, it just kind of cleans up all the different special use.
Yes. And also, a special use permit is often tied to a site-specific site plan. So that's why over time, there had to be several amendments because you're looking at it as each development occurs. This, this makes the rezoning compatible with the uses that are already there. And then they would just need to go through the technical review committee or go through an administrative process for their rezoning.
Jamie, what's the acreage of that?
Right here?
What's the acreage of all that?
Let me see if I have it on the floor. Hold on, I'll tell you. In total, of course, you're asking me to go to the last one that I have here, so. It is twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty to twenty-one acres.
To this epic four, that area.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Ben, for Ben Royal, thank you.
Thank you.
And our last item is item H, city council report.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, council. Do want to introduce Noel Johnson. Noel is our new summer intern. She is a rising sophomore at Appalachian State and she's in the city county management track is what she's working for. And today is her first day, so she'll be with us until the end of August, or July, I'm sorry. So we're excited to have Noel. She lives in Grand, graduate of Southern Athens, and we're happy to have her.
Welcome.
Then also, I was hoping, we have a new Nolan as well. Nolan Schreiner is our new Elon fellow. Nolan will be working with Burlington Downtown Corporation as well as with economic development. So if you see a big guy around, it's really nice hair, that is something, so.
Sounds like normal.
Sounds like normal, yeah. Well, not, not as nice as nobody has, thanks for the hair. But again, the other thing I did want to mention is on June twenty-seventh, which is a Thursday, the RAB will begin, which is Restoration Advisory Board, and this is working with the DOD with respect to Western Electric. And we do have two, two sections scheduled from two to four and one from six to eight in the Fairchild Gym. I'll turn it up to Morgan. Morgan has really done a wonderful job coordinating with the DOD in getting this as a starting process and making sure the DOD is getting pushed along to have this because this is a step we must have before any decide what level of cleanup must occur, so.
Yeah, yeah, I've been able to feed on kind of a planning committee with the DOD and folks from the Army Corps of Engineers and MCDQ to get this together. So they are going to, I emailed with Mr. Edwards this morning, they're going to send their media release hopefully this week. And then we'll kind of parlay off of that and we'll do our education efforts here locally to get folks to that. So on the twenty-seventh, like Craig said, from two to four and then six to eight, will be two different times that folks can come in. There'll be five to seven different kind of kiosk poster places for folks to kind of feed in, go through it. It'll kind of be the history of Western Electric, they're going to cover about the contamination. They're going to talk about remediation efforts to date. All of that being the end goal is the final kiosk is participate in the RAB. So they're, they're seeking applications similar to how we do for our boards and commissions for our community to apply to be on the RAB. And then they'll make selections from that. So this event is to draw up interest, to get folks to apply. And then they are reaching out to some entities on their own to invite people to it. So I think Beverly may have to work to kind of get that on y'all's calendar or some awareness. And then of course, they'll invite our state folks and anyone else who wants to attend. So we hope it will be, we hope they'll have a good turnout. And we're working with them to do a grassroots effort to get folks there. So we'll use kind of those local church communities to get information now. Of course, our Dream Center and folks really getting, making sure we're hitting that neighborhood around Western Electric as well as the greater Burlington audience as well. So here for any questions or thoughts, but.
Do you mind getting any questions?
And again, Morgan's a favorite style of really coordinating with the DOD and really pushing them as well because this is something that has to be done. And she's really staying on top of it, so we do appreciate it. And that's all.
Thank you, Morgan. Anybody have anything else? All right, that's not, we'll stand and adjourn, thank you, everybody, thank you.